Welcome to the council meeting of March 19th, 2024. If anyone in the audience needs headphones, please let us know and we will bring those to you. Let's write for pledge, please.
Self-delegated to comply United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion of the central throne.
Donna, if you do a little call, please.
Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mary Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? And city manager, you have a change?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of changes, please. If you would consider Liz Arbuthnot, Executive Director for Mason County Historical Society, to be added to the presentations before, number one, the January financial report, if you will, and then item E2.
No sound for Zellman.
Item E2, Director Harris is out this evening and Capitol Projects Manager Aaron Nix will be taking his place tonight to present the frontage improvement charge and transportation impact fee code updates.
Counsel, okay with that? All right. Perfect. Counsel, I need an order course to share.
I wanted to shout out the Shelton Police Department. We had an unfortunate situation this week and they were on it and they did a great job. And the public works crew, they've been out there cleaning up all up and down Rover this week, it looks great, they're trimming up trees, they're sweeping, they got the street crew fixing all the little things out there that need to be fixed, it looks really good downtown. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Any other board reports, comments? Thank you. All right. Has everyone reviewed the item of the consent agenda? May I have a motion?
We have to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're at our presentations and Liz, Mason County Historical Museum, has a presentation for us.
Hello, thank you for agreeing to see me on short notice. As you're probably aware, the museum has been a mission to be attended by the old city hall, children's building since 1994. It's the perfect location, I think, for the museum. Historic building, history downtown, you know, it's great for tourists. And we've always felt that our organization is really crucial, that a crucial anchor for the downtown area, even as economic conditions have fluctuated. We do have one critical difficulty with the building and that is our collection storage. So we have an amazing collection, I've said this many times, of archives, we've got 140 years of newspapers, photographs, negatives, you know, tens of thousands of items. And the majority of that is stored in what was originally built as the garage or fire convention in 1994. We also have things in two storage units. We have a shipping container up at MCR and we have things in the attic over the bathrooms in the museum and we have things in the attic of St. David's Episcopal Church. So this stuff is not climate controlled, we have problems with mold, Furman, you know, heat fluctuations, which are really bad with the collection. So all of these things put our collection at risk. So we've been trying to figure out, you know, do we get another building? Staff doesn't really want that, we love our location. But when the boat's built out next door to us into the alley, you know, all of a sudden I went, that's, that's a thought. So we have been looking at, Glenn Williams, who's been kind enough to help us with this, we've been looking at expanding the, the collection storage only. So one way to finance this would be through the heritage grant program at, through the Washington State Historical Society. Go to the next slide, please. So these heritage grants operate on a two-year cycle. Applications that are accepted for this spring won't be voted on by the legislature until next year. And then we have two years following that acceptance to, to complete the project. Extensions are available, but that's another situation. The state requires the grantees to have a lease in place if they don't own the building because they have to keep, they, they need to have control of the property for 10 years following the completion of the project. So we're looking like 13 years out. So that would be three of 23 to seven. The thing is, the grant fund's only one-third of the project, so we would need to come up with two-thirds and we don't have a lot of time, you know, fingers crossed we can place together, but, you know, there's no guarantees. So we're, you know, I'm just working forward until I can't move forward anymore. So this kind of shows what the addition of collection storage, where it would be. The drawings that you see would build around that concrete block area that's to the far right in the picture with the kind of the vent thing. And then this other part is part of the garage. Now, we talked to the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation and they don't believe that that's historically insignificant portion of the building and we would not be touching the historic part of the building at all. So we would be taking that off and then we would be coming out 10 feet into the alley. So there on the left, you can see the existing, the right shows the, what would be the proposed addition. We would be adding, I believe, 1200 square feet, which would do wonders for us and, you know, the idea would be that it would be under control, things could be kept clean, we'd know where things are, you know, which is not the case now. So I guess what I would hope from you guys at least to think about would be a lease extension. And then I would also ask for authorization to proceed with the grant. Like I said, this is, this is a little bit more rushed than we would have hoped, but I'm just thinking as that's the way they work. So I'm happy to be answering any questions. I think the last slide is... Oh, no, here's, here you can see, sorry, here you can see the main floor and the upper floor. So we would also be reconfiguring our restroom so that we would have an accessible restroom. Right now, they're closed, but they're not quite there, so that is also an important part of the project. So now questions?
All right, comments or questions? What is our lease, lease on?
Uh, the lease expires in 2026. Do you remember what month, Liz?
December.
December 26th, the end of the year.
Well, I can't think of a better tenant for a building like that than Historical Society. I mean, so I don't see that, I'm just, well, I already see forehead shaking that I don't think there'd be a lease problem there, so.
In the interim, Liz, do I understand it correctly, you would need a letter expressing the city's interest in extending the lease or renewing a lease for the 10-year period required, 13 years, I guess? Okay.
Yes, and then by the, they would hope, I spoke to someone from the Historical Society, the Washington State Historical Society today, and she would hope that we would have provided, so the grant is in two steps. So the first step is coming up, which is why I'm here tonight, and then the, the second part of it is due in the first week of June. So she would hope that we would have a lease by the first week of June, that's assuming that we get it accepted through part.
So do you need a lease or do you just need a letter?
So we would need a letter for part one, which would end next week.
Okay.
And then a lease extension by June.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's a one-third, is there a matching by the city or is it, or are we gonna find it privately?
We are not asking for a match from the city, although if someone had piled cash somewhere, we would more than have to discuss it. No, this, this would be, this would be an independent project, so, which is why it's tentative at this point.
When you, when you do the project and you're getting the grant, do you have to, do you have to like match the money or can you have in-kind contributions like timber and labor and stuff like that or is it gonna be, where you have to go out and do contract labor and hire, you know, the most expensive guy out there?
We can, so the grant is one-third, the other two-thirds are split, half is dollars and the other half can be in-kind or any proportion. You know, you can have more cash if you're that lucky, but you can't have any more than one-third in-kind.
Okay.
Either materials.
My, my assumption, since it's funds coming from the state, they'd require state bid process to be followed?
Not for volunteers.
No.
Yeah, but.
But bidding the project, yeah.
I would imagine so.
Yeah.
And how soon do you need this letter again?
Friday.
Friday night.
Is there a barrier to providing a letter like this, Mark?
With council's, I guess, approval? No, we can certainly provide a letter that says we intend to negotiate an extended lease agreement beyond 20 December 2026, certainly.
Do we need a motion?
At, at this point? No, I, sorry.
Should I take Kurt's?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to get back to us.
Yep, no, at this point, the letter's fine. When, the lease will come back to council, certainly, right? For approval. So in the meantime, since there's a deadline of June 7th?
Yes.
Correct, for the second phase, then the lease would have to be executed by that point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll look forward to bringing a lease, a new lease back to council prior to June 7th.
Okay, and as far as, just since I'm standing up here, continuing with this process, the grant process is, is approved by, you know, this is okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And the city doesn't have any issues with the man on an alley?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
It's a great asset.
President of the history of our community is there as well?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next item is presentation from Finance Director Mike Giddens.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. This is the first report for the finances for fiscal year 2024. I'll just share with you, when we start out, December's the easy month because the estimates are true to what was actually spent. January's a little bit more difficult because we just have one month of data and we're not always sure, you know, what the timing is on certain projects, especially in the capital funds. Even in the general fund, it's a little bit difficult. On the general fund side of the revenue, and so I'm just gonna start out kind of on page one of the report and move through a little bit of it and give you just a little bit of a glimpse into this because I think, I certainly feel good about this year's budget to start out with compared to where we were last year. Certainly, things can always change, but as far as revenue goes for the month of January, it's, it was very typical. Sales tax came in right about exactly where it had the January of 2023, I think it was like a thousand dollars higher. So, you know, that's good. I mean, of course, we'd love it if it was higher, but having it be kind of spot-on is really what we wanna see. Our estimates, you'll notice on the revenue side, and I'm looking on page two of the report, we're estimating in some cases that at the end of 2024, that there might be a bit of a shortfall in some of the revenues. That's just anecdotally where we're projecting things to be right now. I have every confidence those will come in even a little bit closer to where we're projecting, but we tend to be a little bit conservative on this and with one month in, it's really hard to say. You know, I mentioned sales tax just as an example because I'm sitting here with you on, in middle of March, so I can, I know what happened in February. Sales tax came in $20,000 higher than it did the February before. So you just never know where things are gonna be, so I think where we had shown that sales tax might be down, I don't know that that'll be the case. But again, we're one or two months into the fiscal year, so lots of things can change. Things are, are busy, you know, with the business and occupation tax, we're reaching out, we're doing quite a bit of work with our payers because sometimes that new rate was missed and so we're checking the forms as they come in, communicating with businesses and trying to help. We sent out a lot of information going into this, but, you know, people don't always pay attention to that, they were using old forms, so we're doing a lot of work with that. But that's on the revenue side of things, so again, I would expect that each month we're gonna update this a bit and change a little bit where we see maybe our estimate being for year end. In the general fund, on the expense side, it's also difficult to always predict exactly where we're going to come out with one month of data. I wanted to point out a couple of things. If you look at the detentions, corrections contract through January, there was just a small charge that happened to be for prisoner medical expenses. The way that the timing of the invoices came, we have since paid two months for incarceration of prisoners and so that total expended is at 32,000. So we're on target, that's my message to you, but because of where January sits, if you just look at that, you might say, oh, what's going on with that? That's what's going on, it's just sometimes the timing of when we get the invoices in. Again, I, I expect it to be at or below budget. For the purposes of this, we're just estimating it flat. A couple of the departments, you'll notice, risk management, we're projecting to be a little bit over and that's partly due to our liability insurance payment that we had. So that has, I think we've shared, that came in, it's doubled in two years and so that hit that particular department a little bit harder than we had budgeted. Another area that is trending high is animal control. If you just look at one month, and again, I'm sitting here in the middle of March, so I know, have a little bit more data in my head, that's going to trend well over budget. So if you just look at the one month, if you take 20,000 times 12, you can do the math, it's gonna be over budget. It's probably gonna be even more than that, just looking at where we're headed for February and March, so that one will over expand. Otherwise, things are looking in line. The fire and EMS contract for services budget line is much more accurately budgeted this year. If you remember last year, we'd under-budgeted for that, so that's looking good. On page seven, where we estimate the fund balances and where we're going to end the year, everything's looking good. You know, we, we're estimating where projects are gonna happen. We built a budget across all of the funds, not just the general fund, to be doing more capital projects, so we're gonna draw down some funds. We knew that would be the case. So where we started with the beginning fund balance, it's gonna end lower because we're getting some work done. I do wanna point out that we're showing at the end of January, and I'm looking at the bottom of the page where we track citywide FTE by fund, as of January 31st, there were seven and a half positions vacant in the general fund and four in other city funds for a citywide vacancy rate of 11 and a half. You know, that can lead to some underspending in some areas. It certainly, as the city manager and I were just talking about, it adds workload, it slows us down in getting projects done. So, you know, some of that has changed as of February, we filled the IT position, but that's something that I think all of us at department director positions are watching because it's difficult to fill positions and, you know, we've had some more changes and so we'll keep that updated. The rest of the report, though, I think everything's looking good for this point in the year. Finance staff is hard at work, particularly Deputy Finance Director Schmitzer, working on our annual report. She has the SMPD annual report ready for my review, so that's a big part of what we're doing now. Those, the annual financial reports due in late May to the state auditor's office and so we're working to get that done and then as, we're already almost a quarter of the way through the year, so we'll start billing on some of our grants that we have going on for some capital work around the city and other things going on. So that's where the finances are, one month into the year and we'll be bringing the report back monthly to keep you updated on where things are.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, our first business item is resolution to accept grant funds for the library deck. Parks and Recreation Commissioner Jordan has the details for us.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I bring to you a resolution to, for accepting a library deck grant with the Washington State Department of Commerce Library Capital Improvement Program, specifically for the library deck. So this, we applied for this grant back in April of 2022 and we are just now working on getting that rolling. So we requested $70,000 for the improvement and we were approved $67,900. This project is the removal of existing membrane of the surfacing of the deck that covers the wood frame and the wood safety railings. So any, or anything that's rotten from water intrusion, that would also be removed and replaced. The new waterproof pieces that would go in would help with longevity and aesthetics. So by doing that, it would just longer lifespan. The building is over 30 years old, so this is a little need and, and right now, it's not being used by the public, so once this is rolling and finished, it would be open for public use, which I think would also bring in more people to come to the library. And then it's also appealing, looking from the outside when you're driving down 7th and 4th. As a budget, we've budgeted $140,000 for the project. The city, between us and the library, down the fund was between $23,000, $24,000 and then several regional library is putting in $23,000 and then we'll get the grant of $67,900. And then we're just looking for further consideration and then happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jordan. Donna, does anyone have a public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please, resolution number 1322-0324 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? It'd be nice to get that deck opened again, it's been how many years?
A lot.
A few years.
I don't know how to exactly.
A few years, yep. It'd be nice to get the deck opened again. All right.
Just for, for their information, so in 2019, I believe, when we painted the exterior of the library and replaced the, the roof with a new metal roof, these deck repairs were included in that project. We did not receive enough funds from capital appropriation to complete this portion of the project, so those were delayed to this point in time. The Department of Commerce had the library capital improvement grant program available in 2022 and so went forward to complete this project and ba, basically buttons up the exterior of that building.
All right. We have a motion to second to place resolution number 1322-0324 on April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. We have an ordinance related to frontage improvements, charges and transportation impact fees, public work, I'm sorry, Aaron Nix will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Aaron Nix, Capital Projects Manager. You get the C team today, sorry. I'll do my very best, I've kind of been in and out of this issue, but not always an easy issue to discuss, every city has to go through this, so I think the opportunity denies for the public to write their comments and suggestions, which is great. So I'm gonna be fairly brief. Council remembers there were some actions taken last year as it pertains to frontage improvement charges as well as transportation impact fees. What this is before you is an ordinance to revise some of those sections, specifically section 12.36 and section 17.12 pertaining to those issues. Last fall, the council adopted an updated version of the manual that defines what an infill lot is and the required improvement standards. The master fee schedule was also updated last fall to include in lieu fee payments when applicable for curb sidewalk paving or infill lot developments. That's identified and you'll see the changes, modifications associated with that. A little bit of history for the newer council members. Frontage improvements were implemented, I believe in 2015, I believe it was $50 per linear foot at that point, as far as when I talk about frontage improvements, I'm talking about when a development happens, there's something done out front in order to ensure safety, circulation, all of those, all those types of things. So it was repealed in 2017 and then last year, we initiated again to charge frontage fees. So at least that section of the code, if you look at it, it's very brief as far as modifications, that's what we're discussing in that piece. I'd like to move on, if I could, to the transportation impact fees. If the council and for the new council members, those are one-time charges for new developments for capacity improvements to the transportation system for the impact of new users and are not ongoing rates. That's, people need to understand that, this is a one-time pop. The idea being if you have a site that's not developed and there's improvements, there's road, those types of things, you're gonna create an impact to your transportation system by that new development. This is an opportunity, a way to kind of offset those impacts and make it more equitable, I guess is the best word to use for that. Modification to the current traffic impact fee is identified within here as well. Both city staff and the attorney reviewed all those. Again, a lot of this was cleanup work, a lot of, especially specifically with our TIF code, there was a lot of stuff that was outdated and we needed to update it because the law on that, because it's so, can be controversial changes sometimes. So that's kind of what I would like to present to you guys tonight. I'm willing and happy to answer any questions that you may have specifically, otherwise I wanna let the public, please, have their opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, does anyone have a public comment?
I'll speak. Would you like me to sign up?
Yeah.
You're here at my time, Mason County member. So the impact fees, I guess what I would ask, and if you can't answer it or not, maybe somebody can come back to me, but I do, what, how much are we talking about? What's, what's the dollar figure? Aye, I mean, if we're trying to invigorate downtown and trying to get more people to build and do use these infill lots, because we need homes, right? As everybody says, whenever we come to these meetings. So I guess my question is, why are we gonna negatively impact somebody else? And if it's a minor impact, I'd like to know what that is, but if it gets into some big financial dollars, I'd like to know what those are. So if somebody could let me know, that'd be great, thank you.
Anyone else? Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a reading of ordinance number 2020-0224.
Ordinance number 2020-0224, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter 12.36 and repealing and replace chapter 17.12 of the
and repealing and replace Chapter 17.12 of the Shelton Municipal Code related to transportation-related development charges.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place ordinance number 2020-0224 onto the council's action agenda for further consideration at the April 2nd, 2024 meeting.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Oh, we need a second, actually. I didn't hear. Okay. Comments or questions? This also gives, is fixing, gives like credits if they do the infrastructure themselves.
In lieu of, or, 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 yeah, or credits if, if the, if the, if the improvements are created by the developer? Yes, you can, you can receive credits to those impact fees. I think we talked about that before when we were developing those frontage improvement standards. If it's, if it's within their wherewithal to put in a sidewalk, curb, gutter, pave the streets, if those are some required, it can often be done cheaper by the, by the developer, by the contractor than it can the city down the road. And they get it, you know, they get those improvements up ahead of time, too. To be clear, the, the frontage improvements aren't required in all locations. We talked about where they would be required. The in lieu fees may be required to offset our critical pedestrian routes. And that's how we get people from neighborhoods to critical infrastructure throughout the city, like the library, parks, hospital, grocery store, shopping areas like that. So this wouldn't include full frontage improvements in all areas of the community. The traffic impact fee for a single-family resident, as adopted in 2024 master fee schedule, is $4,701.11.
Per ERU.
For a single-family resident, so.
Per trip.
If, yeah, per trip. So the calculation is much different based on a commercial structure or a multifamily structure, they're based on trip counts. So those trip counts, there's a, what's it called again, Mr. Nix?
Trip, what's that again?
The, the calculator, the spreadsheet that measures trip counts and for.
The black box.
For use, yeah, exactly. So there's a, there's a, there's a guide essentially that is used for, that determines the trip counts per use. So this might be for a gas station, a retail establishment, a multifamily structure. Those trip counts then generate the traffic impact fee. Schools, places like that can be significant, significant traffic impact fees. And if you see what's happening up on Spring Road and Wallace Nealon Boulevard at peak counts, that, those traffic impact fees offset the costs of providing those improvements, those off-site improvements to those intersections that help facilitate the movement of traffic through those intersections and other transportation improvements in the city.
And this is kind of mostly housekeeping. We've already approved all of this, correct?
Well, the fee schedule is, was adopted in 2024. The front, the design and construction standards were, were adopted, yes, previously. So this aligns our design and construction standards with our city code.
Any other comments? All right. We have a motion in a second to place ordinance number 2020-0224 on the council action agenda for further consideration at the April 2nd meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. All right, Capital Project Manager Aaron Nix has information for us about a contract for ADA transition.
Thank you again, sir. I appreciate it. So if you recall, council, earlier in the year, we worked on the development of a plan of study that looked at pavement and its condition. I mean, identified that as required by the state on all of our roadway systems. It helps you get grants. There's a lot of reasons why they make you do that. This is number two whammy that the state is working with us on. And I think it's important, I really, this is really an important piece, in my opinion. It pertains to the ADA Act, ADA American Disabilities Act. What I'm proposing or bringing forward for discussion, last year, if you recall, the council budgeted $60,000 to do what we call an ADA transition plan. And what that is, is basically an evaluation of our, all our sidewalk network throughout the entire city, identifying areas in which ramps, other types of access for ADA does not meet current standards. Within that plan, then, you develop, you devise a plan in order to get rid of those ADA noncompliant ramps and those types of things. You also have to include how you're going to budget for that kind of stuff. So what this does is it really helps prioritize highest impacted areas or areas worse, worse bad. I'm just going to give you an example. Currently, we just did a walkthrough of Olympic Highway. In that section, we just got TIB grant. I counted about 25 ramps that do not meet current ADA standards. So this is a really important thing for us, because what it does is it provides us some guidance and direction. It also allows us to be more competitive and get monies to do those fixes. So we are trying to integrate everything that we can when we do capital projects and fixing a lot of these things. But the reality, and every city's going through this, the reality is that the standards change, not often, but, you know, five, 10 years, slope, all that kind of stuff. So that's what this plan does, and I'm asking the council to consider that. Again, this has been budgeted, it's a little bit more than the $60,000 you budgeted. It's about $60,500, $900, something to that effect, some change. But the intent is to hire a contractor, a consultant. We have most of our facilities already mapped, just a matter of putting that plan together, bringing it back, doing some community equip, and moving forward with that. So that's kind of the background of what I'm bringing forward to you guys to consider us moving forward.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, does anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place resolution number 1321-0224 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, here none. We have a motion in a second to place resolution number 1321-0224 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Aaron is back. Has another aye for us.
Thank you, guys. And I apologize for that. We've talked about this in the past, too, you guys. RH2 was the design engineering firm that helped us with our safe routes to schools. Good, good news, just letting you guys know, we're having a pre-pond tomorrow for that project. So that will be proceeding. If you recall, those are the intersections, or the crossings by Evergreen Elementary and up by the high school, rapid flashing beacons, speed, speed signs, that's proceeding forward. I also told you guys that we want to utilize some internal staff to kind of offset some of these costs that we have with utilizing consultants to do construction management and construction inspection work. Totally agree. I have, I have a background in that. I know Jay does, and Amy, our senior inspector, is really good. We do, though, in order to meet the requirements of the grants that we receive, have to have a PE certified to be able to look at and do reviews of submittals, those types of things. So basically, just a, it's not necessarily a rubber stamping exercise. They will go through and make sure that all the components are correct. And then at the end, you have to legally have a PE stamp your ads built to say it was constructed this way. With that, we stripped down a lot of the other costs. If you recall, one of the other projects, we had recently about $150,000 construction management. We've got this down to about $24,000. Again, it was just for those bare bones things that a PE, a licensed engineer, has to write off on for local programs. So that's what I'm bringing forward to you guys for discussion. Significantly less money, all going to be covered by the grant, and it just, it adds some, some little protection in that it's a consultant, not necessarily staff, because we just don't have PE's on staff to be able to do that right now. So if there's questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place resolution number 1323-0324 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
I'd just like to say that the city has become a lot more walkable in the past few years, and I need to continue that trend, get people out of their cars, get them walking, get them spending money locally.
Sure.
Having safeness on the streets, having people stop for you when you're at a crosswalk, because they can see you now.
Yeah.
And that's part of the small-town feel, is when people come up and actually stop for you and let you cross. I think all of this should be, we should keep on doing it and making people safe to feel they can get out of their cars and walk around town. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Also, thank you for staff bringing those costs down for us.
Absolutely.
We have a motion in a second to place resolution number 1323-0324 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aaron, it's the Aaron Show tonight.
It is. Again, I'm sorry, but good news, you guys. This is the fun part for me. What we have before you is we, it took a lot of work, a lot more than I thought, because we got a new grant manager for this particular piece. But we were at the point, you've already accepted these grant monies, I believe it was for 1.6?
1.8.
1.8.
Yeah, 1.8, I'm sorry. This is relevant to the angle side pressure zone improvements that we need to do. If you remember, we have an upper and a lower pressures, a pressure booster pump station. The upper one does not, it functions, but it could be a lot more efficient and effective. So what this project is going to do, again, with grant monies, we're basically going to make sure that everything's talking to each, each other with regard to the reservoirs, the wells, all those things. So there's going to be what they call SCADA improvements. We're going to be putting in some new pumps in the lower section, as well as doing some piping improvements up on, in the angle side zone, with the intent to kind of increase, increase pressures, but also help us with our dead storage issues that we've been, that we've talked to you guys about in the past. So all this is, and the attorney, I've had her look at it, is a grant agreement of, thank you, yes, we accept the monies, and this is the process we need to utilize in order to utilize the monies. So pretty typical stuff, but 1.8 million dollars of other people's money for us. So if there's any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place resolution number 1323-0324 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration.
Part of what it was actually, resolution number 24.
What they're 24, dash.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to place resolution number 1324-0324 on the April 2nd, 2024 action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, our only action item is resolution to accept funds for improvements at Olympic Highway North. Aaron has details for it.
I brought this forward to you guys previously. This is the get-go. This is the grant agreement for us to receive our 4.2 million dollars to upgrade and redo Olympic Highway from C Street all the way up to Walts Nealon. I will tell the council that we are, we really, we want to utilize as much monies as we can to help do some of the other pedestrian enhancements that you guys talked about. But the reality, and I'm just, I'm always honest with you guys, a lot of this grant money is going to be sucked up in asphalt. And that's just the bottom line. The reality is that that road has just deteriorated to the point where we're going to have to dig it out and do a lot of improvements. Ultimately, what we'd like to see is more of the bulge outs, more flashing beacons. Are, we have a signal hole in that corridor that's just hanging on, basically, it doesn't have mast arms, it's hanging on the cords. We'd like to get mast arms, those kinds of things, but it's going to be limited. In any event, this is the grant agreement with TIB to allow us to proceed with that. And if there's any questions, again, my intent is to have a couple of open houses. We need to get the business community involved and engaged in this, to understand what we're doing. Because the reality, in my opinion, just like our gateway project, to me, that's a gateway, too. And that's a gateway into our business, that's great. If there's any questions, please.
All right, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a reading of resolution number 1320-0224.
Resolution number 1320-0224. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign a grant agreement with the State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board in order to restart Olympic Highway North from C Street to Walts Nealon Boulevard.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would adopt resolution number 1320-0224 as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Yeah, with the highway north, it's a little bit rougher to walk, so anything we could do to help that out. It's also not the same as the other areas to walk, so it's what we needed, and thank you for bringing this in.
I might also mention to you, one of the only reasons why we got this grant is that we needed to put a bike lane in. So that was a requirement of this grant. So when you talk about walkability, the state's pushing it, too.
All right. We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number 1320-0224 presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Aaron, you're free. Mark, do you have the manager report tonight?
No, boy, I don't have a lot for each, and I, I just want to recognize, as Councilmember Blush mentioned, our crews are out there, especially with daylight savings time changing on us. We're getting more daylight, we're getting more use, the sun's out, our parks are really busy all, all, all weekend. We're in the process of hiring temporary staff, our seasonal staff to assist us in those measures. So if the public will kind of bear with us for a few weeks before we get some of those seasonal staff on to, I don't know, probably start raining, and then the, and then the use will go down and won't be as impactful. But to keep up with ballfields and restrooms and playgrounds and all of those things, we really appreciate it. Grass is growing fast as well at the same time. So it's really important that we have these seasonal employees come in and assist us to make sure that we can serve our community as best as possible. That's all I wanted to mention tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, anyone interested in public comment tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Jackie Jewitt.
Good evening, Jackie Jewitt, Mason County. So here I have a list of events that have recently gone on downtown. And of course, you know, you can't pay everywhere at once, right? So this is just a handful of days, and this is just some of the things that either Dean or myself have witnessed. So I'm going to read my list. So on the 6th of March, there was a group of people by the back of the VFW hall, or, yeah, by the back of the VFW. And they had garbage everywhere, and there was drug use that was visible to our eyes. So I'm sure that other people noticed that's going on. Again, on the 6th of March, individuals were hanging out Safeway on the corner. They were blocking the sidewalk, and they were panhandling. And they were also back by the dumpster trying to get in, to get some food, probably. There were individuals in the alcove of the movie theater, as there always is. I've been approached by several different people when I've gone to the movie theater to buy my favorite popcorn. On the 8th of March, there were shopping carts by the railroad trestle, Pine Street, the park and ride in the creek at Front Street, the alley on the Community Lifeline property. They're just still all over, and I noticed that, you know, we're getting a lot of new residents, and I'm sure that they need those shopping carts to carry around their belongings when they live here. On the 10th of March, rural park, just full of garbage again. There were dogs off leashes, they were running around, people are standing there doing drugs for everybody to see. There was also, on that same day, there was, looked like to me like a bike, you know, chop shop. There were parts everywhere, they were painting, all the bikes were dismantled and, well, not ridable as far as I could see, and I didn't know that that was a repair shop. On the 14th of March, there was a man sleeping on the sidewalk by the, by the town tavern. As I continue on, Post Office Park, there's just dogs running all over in the grass in there, and there's just garbage, and just, just garbage. Garbage is not looking for our city. Lady under an awning at the Bank of America again. There was a man under the, under an awning. There was a man under the, under an awning with a full shopping cart full of dolls. And when he was asked to move, he freaked out. The, the police ended up coming, he was screaming and out of control. Thank you for listening to half my list. Our next speaker is Dean Jewett.
Dean Jewett, lifelong Mason County member. Thank you, my lovely wife, for half the list. The gentleman that, that had, that pushes the dolls and dresses them in dress, do whatever you need to do. Do not dump your cart out all over the sidewalk. Have two officers, a sheriff, a DCR, all involved with it. How much does that cost us? Joe, maybe you can take a look at that. You're a numbers guy. Aye. And then, an hour later, they're still there. And then, three hours later, that gentleman is at Neil's Pharmacy. I mean, I don't, I don't get it. It just, it doesn't make any sense to me. It impacted six different businesses in a negative manner. Do you want your grandma walking through that? Do you want your kids seeing that? I don't. But I want to talk about accountability, transparency, teamwork, leadership, enforcement, timeliness. Timeliness. If we see a situation, what do we do with it? Do we put our head in the sand and let it grow? Or do we attack it and make sure that it doesn't create a bigger negative problem later on that costs us what? More money to deal with. Anybody know about the Conklin property up above the old bowling alley and stuff? How long have you guys let that go on and on and on? Why hasn't code enforcement issued a citation to that and cleaned that property up? I don't understand. There's ordinances for that. Enforcement. I would like to have the council work with our police department in, instead of being as a reactive, to be proactive. Now, they're busy, they have a lot of stuff to deal with, and I appreciate everything that they do, especially since we have a new police chief. I like the direction that it's going. Leadership. Those in power need to make tough decisions. You guys are in positions to make the tough decisions. You're going to have to start making them. You can't just blase, blase. If you keep doing what you've always done, you're going to keep getting what you've always got. And what we got don't work. And you guys have to understand that. You have to see it, you have to know it. Have you guys gone through the ordinances like I asked? Do you drive past Brewer Park a couple of days a week so that you can see what we see? Teamwork. The city, I started going to the county commissioners' meetings. I go to the city coun, I go to city council, county commissioner, and school board meetings. So, we need to have teamwork. You can't be just me. I mean, I see Eric and all those, I don't see anybody else. So, let's get some work going together. We all know where their scams at. Let's go take care of them. You need help, I'll help you. I got dump trucks, I got excavators, I got whatever we need. Let's either return the shopping carts to Safeway or charge them for them. Either one. All right, thanks, guys. See you in two weeks.
Anyone else sign up, Donna?
We have one person on to open that. Don, you can help.
Good evening, Miranescu, Deputy Mayor Schmidt, and fellow councilmembers. I'm calling from Executive Director of Cajote Communities. The Nashville County Department of Commerce found that 45,900 units of affordable housing are needed to be built every year for the next 22 years to meet the demand. And the SCS group found that in Mason County, they were short 651 units for low-income earners. What are the current services we offer? Parent support housing, 30 units. Emergency shelter beds, 35 units. Nine-day emergency shelter beds, approximately 100 units. Two-year transitional housing, approximately 24 units. And as of 2023, we have 381 people on the streets. Policing reduces homelessness. Law doesn't reduce homelessness. Making out a crime only creates increases in homelessness and health issues. I will bet again, Mason County Point and Time Count in 2022 was 238. In 2023, it was 381. And I'm sure it's going up in '24. So, that is right there demonstrating with the policing activities, it has not reduced or discouraged homelessness. I've heard you about drug use. I want you to know that the National Point and Time Count showed that there were 582,000 people in the United States that were homeless. There are also 58.7 million people aged 12 or older who have a substance use disorder, including 12.5 million who had an alcohol use disorder, and 27.2 million who had a drug use disorder. So, the National Institute of Drug Use is the one that is stating that, and that is a national issue, not a homeless issue. Part of the national measures all encourage more use. That's another thing that I've heard. There's no need to support that. A review of Action of Medical Services from Massachusetts found that when given Narcan, 93.5 of people, prisoned people survived an overdose. There are also 106,000 drug-involved overdose deaths reported in the United States, again, demonstrating that this is not a homeless issue, this is a national crisis. Sweeping people, moving them out of sight, moving them off of Gower Park property and other properties. In January 2019, Takana had a pit count of 536. They did 3.1 million dollars' worth of sweeps. And in January of 2020, their homeless count was 544. If Mason and Shelton want to reduce homelessness, the only proven way, by the data I have spoken about for two years now, is to increase housing and foster services. Thank you.
All right. Does the council have any new items for discussion? The next meeting is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, 6:00 p.m. for today's session. The 26th has been canceled. This meeting is adjourned at 6:30, 7:00 p.m.
Recording stopped.
Almost on the dark.
Not dark.
Right, yes, exactly right.